Notice hereby given that the town is going to be in Texas, we know Wednesday the twenty-fourth day of September twenty twenty-five at six P M. At the town, at the Laguna Vista Town Hall, one twenty-two grand, this is Laguna Vista seven eight five seven eight, pursuant to the government code, Texas five five one point one two seven, one or more members of the town council may attend. We take the video conference before the town or council will be physically present at the above meeting location. The following items will be discussed. Hold up order at six oh one. Each and a pledge.
Henry Father, we come together tonight in service to our community. Bless this council with wisdom, fairness, and compassion as we make decisions that affect our town. Grant us patience to listen, courage to lead, and humility to work together for the common good. We ask your special care for those in need within our community. May they find comfort, strength, and support. Guide us to act with kindness and integrity in all that we do. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and the Texas flag. I plead allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, and one indivisible.
Councilmember Dr. Romero? Mrs. Howard? Here. Mrs. Perez? Here. Mr. Quinones?
Here.
Mrs. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Carter?
Here. We should have been giving my mission.
Yes.
This is the doctor. He has not driven the car. But he was saying he has not driven the car. I think he plans on coming, so we're gonna wait on this.
So much of that time of attention is meetings. Okay.
Form. I'll be allowed three minutes for first you to address the council on any topic. There will be discussion from last taken during the agenda items, which we must identify in social. We're speaking to the secret question, unless you presented the C. Secretary prior to the meeting. Very good. Moving forward, item five. What I want to do, if it's okay with the board, is if we can move up item thirteen to the top. Item thirteen ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, consideration possible action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven. In order to the town council, the town of Laguna Vista, Texas approving and adopting bylaws of the board directors of reinvestment zone number one, town of Laguna Vista, Texas, the zone, approving the final project and financing plans for the zone, establishing certain economic development programs for the zone, approving a tax incremental reinvestment zone, TURS, between the town and gallery development LLC, authorizing and directing the execution of the TURS agreement, approving an administer administrator for the zone and authorizing the exec execution of an administrative services agreement with the zone, providing its separability clause and providing an effective date.
Yes, members of council, this is our, the next step in terms of following through with this process of the third board. Unless you have any questions, unfortunately, is the attorney also on Zoom or no? We will try to answer them, but the attorney is really the one that will have all the answers. But if there's any questions.
Well, I was not, I'm not on the board for why I wasn't here. No, I know, but I was, I have obligations to my work. Um, I do have a handful of questions and I don't feel comfortable with voting out the city. So just like the financial plans hasn't haven't been shared with us. You know, the final project, I had to ask the chair today, actually, like who is the administrator for for the TURS? Um, I think that all that information needs to be shared with the board, not just the board that's sitting there yesterday so that the entire council can be aware, like this room, Dr. Marzoni, here, to be able to also be a part of that process. It's pretty crucial that we are aware of that information before voting on an ordinance that ties us to this entire oh thirty-year plan, which I don't even know what the span of the TURS is for. What's what's the span of it? What is the obligation of the city? All of that, and that information you should have shared with us because I had to get information from her for this meeting because I'm not on the board and nothing was shared with the council. And we're voting on something that we have no idea what it is, and that's not, that's inexcusable.
Well, Chairman, at any time, if you wish to respond to that, the only thing is that like with the other boards, everything that's approved, discussed and approved by that board, then subsequently has to be approved also by the council.
I'm I'm completely aware, but what what I'm trying to get you to understand is that we are going into an agreement as a town with another entity to develop for this community. And we don't have any information on that. The other boards, we're not going into like thirty-year agreements with these boards.
Actually, the information has been provided throughout the public hearings.
Financial planning?
Well, at the end being at the at the meeting yesterday. But essentially, you're talking about it's thirty-five year agreement. As far as the the way it's gonna work is that fifty percent of the additional tax revenue from the development will be for the for the jump on the other fifty percent is what's gonna be set aside to reimburse for infrastructure costs of future development that will expedite that development because without it, the developers won't develop that area because it's too expensive. But with this, it facilitates that process and they see that they're gonna get reimbursed for the cost of their infrastructure costs. And the fifty percent that's generated from you for the new values is gonna be used for that. And they will come before the board and make a proposal in terms of we have to spend this much, we want to get reimbursed, and then the board has to approve that. And subsequently, then the council is will will ratify that action as well.
Sure, and I, and if I mean, I think that Councilmember Howard is aware of TURS and how it works. She's asking for the specifics for the agreement with between us and the other entity. Not so much what is TURS and how does it work? I think I think that she would read that.
The email that you got today was the complete with the numbers that we approved last night at the meeting, the email that has the financial plan and stuff. That's what she received the subject.
What's first attachment to have the second attachment? Leah, can you resend that?
And and of course, this is something that obviously Laguna Vista is doing now, but this is something that's being done by basically all other municipalities and the counties. Cameron County has them, and not only one, but various TURS agreements with its homes. And most of the cities, including our neighboring Los Fresnos, already have this.
Now, with those tax, those, that tax base is way higher than ours. Like you can't compare us to Los Fresnos or Brownsville. Or Port Isabel, not, we're like, I'm comparable, sorry.
I have a motion.
The list of tax parcels within the zone, that's it right there?
It has three attachments.
Reinvestment zone number one, town of Laguna Vista, Texas, final project and finance.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know.
Would you mind it?
It has color coded. Color coded, project costs.
Since our mayor must recuse himself of the discussion of this, may I suggest if it's, if you're willing to ask the other member of the board to perhaps answer questions or give a brief about this.
Sure, be happy to. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you. It's our fifth meeting together discussing this. I think we came into this with an understanding of how can we provide more public infrastructure for the city of Laguna Vista in a way where the city of Laguna Vista doesn't have their tax rates go up in a way where the people who live here don't have to pay tax into that? This is our opportunity to try and make that happen. So I've been here before when we've talked about dog parks and I've been here before when we've talked about, you know, making use of some of the dead land. I've been here before when we've talked about walking trails. This is a way that as the developer, developer would pay for those city public improvements. And only if there is an increase in the tax value of the land that they improve, will the developer have any chances to have some of those public improvements reimbursed? So no current tax revenue goes to this, of the city, there's none. And if the, if it's a place in the city that's outside the tax, the TURS zone, it will never be affected, their taxes never go to this. It's only new homes that would be built in the area that their incremental tax value would go to help reimburse developer for taking on the risk of creating some of these public amenities. It's an opportunity for the city to create all the things it wants without having to spend any money on it. So it's not having to spend taxes, it's not having to raise taxes, it's not having to go out and get any grants. Uh, that's kind of the the nuts and bolts that we've been discussing. I think, I mean, most of us are all aware and we're happy to answer any questions Miss Howard has here tonight. Since I know she's very busy, this is volleyball season and that's the time when that happens. So obviously, it's important that she has any of her questions answered. So anything that we can help answer, please, we're here, any other board members. Uh, and I would also say tonight is not the final night, right? This is, this is just a step in the process of moving it along. We can always have more discuss, if we approve the ordinance tonight, we can always have more discussion between now and the second ordinance reading. I would be happy to do whatever we have to do to help make sure every board member is comfortable with this. Enjoy our conversation so far. All I can say is it's a win for the city and a win for the people who live here to try and make use of the land that that has not been used for over thirty, forty, fifty years. Sense, Miss Howard?
No, I appreciate it, and I'm not against developing anything by any means, don't get me wrong. My my biggest concern, which is usually, I'm always strongly supporting is our police department and our fire department because we are already in dire need of additional support. And I know this is probably not a today problem, but maybe like, you know, once the developing starts, you know, rolling in motion and you have people.
It's residents.
Residents out there in that area, you know, what is the city's plan on on that? Because A, we can't even afford to add a halftime person right now. So how is the TURS going to assist in that manner? That is my biggest question.
That makes a lot of sense. What the TURS does is allow us to start developing land that has never been developed. So for every new person that comes into the town, it isn't necessarily a drain on the resources of the town. It adds to the resources of the town. You could imagine we could bring in a hundred new homes and that's gonna help pay for all these services. The TURS is a way that the city can grow. Like we're gonna build land that's never been built, right? We're gonna take advantage of just bare like land. So as we bring in new residents, every new resident actually costs less money as the population goes up. And it's gonna help grow things like the fire department, uh, police department. Maybe instead of having, you know, to build a new place right across the street, we can envision a bigger place as this, as the city grows. It's all about like, how do we feed the growth and how we would feed the dreams that all of us have about living here? Of no, this doesn't affect school taxes in any way whatsoever. It's not attached to the school tax, it's not attached to water tax, it's not attached to any other tax at all. It's not attached attached to any tax that the city currently has. So there's no way that developer can like magically get tax. The only way that developer can get any money is if they go build and spend their own money to build out the infrastructure and to build up, quite frankly, we're talking about in the in the plant, dog parks, walking trails, a new commercial facility for people to be able to come and spend their money here. Like it's all about how do we increase money and dollars coming here? And at the same time, right now, you're familiar, I'm sure, with Mattiero, which is right at the corner, Highway one hundred and seventy-seven. They're building like a hundred eighty million dollar tourist project. They're getting that money to spend on the same type of public infrastructure. And we're trying to compete against that. And if we can't have kind of sort of play by the same rules, then a beautiful place like that gets built over there on Highway one hundred and seventy-seven and we just sit here not growing. So how do we solve in a nicer police department and not always being hamstrung by these hard budget concerns? We need to grow our tax base, right? We need to bring in more population and we need to raise the value of the homes that are here. And how do you do that? You do that by creating more public amenities. People drive a car like, wow, look at that, that's kind of a nice place to live. I'm willing to pay a little bit more money to live there. So we see the overall appreciation, not just in the TURS zone, but everywhere in Laguna Vista. So that suddenly the cities starts noticing, hey, our budget isn't quite hurting the way that it was before. So this is a, you know, it's a tool that the state legislature created so that cities could grow without having to spend all the money. Because it's really hard for a city to go out and say, hey, we want to spend five hundred thousand dollars on a dog park. Well, we know the city wants a dog park. We'd love to go build a five hundred thousand dollar dog park. It's at the developer's risk. Sure, we want to do it because we think that it's gonna bring more people here, right? We're we're not pretending that as developers, it doesn't have an advantage to us. The nicer public amenities we can build, the nicer the things are that we're gonna be able to, you know, attract the people. So it's all, it's all about like, how do we create a flourishing community? How do we put sidewalks in, right? Would be cool to walk down the street. Uh, we'd love to see things like that. And everything that we intend to build is a public event. We're not talking about the golf course. We're talking about it's open to the entire community to be able to come and enjoy. Right across from the Eco Tourism Center, we want to build a six acre lake. We want to put a bird burning platform there and we want people to be able to come. Whether you live in Laguna Vista or not, spend some of your tax dollars here. Let us reap those sales taxes. There's just so many ways that this helps us grow. Does that make, does that answer some of that question? I know it's a lot to absorb all at once and you're sitting here and I can certainly appreciate your concern.
I know that it increases, you said something about increasing the property value. So how would that affect those residents, their unaffixed incomes, right?
Sure, absolutely.
To answer that, going back to your original question in terms of, are we gonna have the money to meet the demand of this growth, such as receiving issue police officers, fire, and all of that? It it's the same thing as the two, the two potential developments that are coming in and this community now is in process of doing some long-term planning, which it needs so that you can consider, just even those two. You want to know there's gonna be so many more families, so many households. And that, if we can project work together in terms of what is that gonna be in terms of officers? And you compare that to the additional revenue that's gonna come in from that development. And you, and you plan accordingly. And then you face it in, the same thing here, it's not gonna happen overnight where all of a sudden the demand for those services is gonna be there. It's gonna be over years and you face into it.
Speaking notes also, what she just said was just an important point. Whoa, are property taxes, are values of our homes gonna shoot up? We're gonna have to pay a bunch more money in property tax? No, they're not. What is gonna happen is there's gonna be a healthy appreciation of property values consistently across the state of Texas, property values go up about four point five percent a year. If you're in a crazy place like Dallas, they've seen it go up about twenty percent a year for the last twenty years. We're not anticipating something like that. Our projections are all based on a healthy average three to four and a half percent appreciation of the homes here. But we also don't want to get stuck where our our property taxes aren't going up at all. What is going up? Inflation, right? So as inflation goes up, our property appreciation has to match that. Otherwise, the value of every dollar the city brings in is less, right? So we have to try and match that in some sort of way. And how can we match that? Well, we have to make sure we have enough public amenities. You spoke to two of the other developers that I've talked about doing this here. Why is ours different? Why should we do a TURS and they're not? They haven't envisioned public amenities like we're putting in it. Quite frankly, their spaces are a lot more limited. They don't have the opportunity to do that. We have a special opportunity because we have a large acreage to set aside at our own expense some of that land to be able to be used for public amenities for everybody to be to to enjoy. On top of that.
I'm sorry, and to be clear, the maintenance of that property, if you want to touch on that.
The maintenance of all the property, the maintenance of a burning station, the maintenance of a dog park, the maintenance of a walking trail, all of that has.
Sidewalks, please.
The sidewalks, all of that, the streets, you name it, sewer systems, is the developer has taken on that risk for the duration of the life of the TURS. When the TURS is over, then the city gets a hundred percent of the tax and it's gonna have received a hundred percent of the growth. And at that point, it's gonna be in a healthy position to be able to take that on. But for the entire duration of it, the city takes on no new expenses. So you're talking about a whole bunch of public amenities with no new expenses for the city. The developers want to do that. Why the heck would the developer do that? That sounds like a kind of sweet deal for the city. Developers want to do that because the developer wants to sell homes, right? And so we want to see beautiful public amenities so that people want to come live here. And we're having to compete against a TURS in Port Isabel, a TURS on the island, a TURS in Brownsville, a TURS in Los Fresnos, a TURS in San Benito, a TURS in McAllen, a TURS in West, these are the people we're we're competing against. They all have this this type thing. It it exists to try and allow cities to grow in healthy ways without having to be burdened by raising taxes, right? It allows cities to keep taxes low and yet experience public amenities.
Other thing on on that, on properties where, you know, it might be a burden for that property owner because now the values are higher. Although it's not gonna directly impact those people, it would actually if a city wiped out the thing that the values of the whole, the whole city were going up. But once that goes up, it's better to be taxing additional new property, generating that revenue so that we can face the growth and properly take care of it. Whereas if we stay the way we are, we're still gonna end up needing additional services for the community. But we don't have, they were not gonna have a stream of revenue coming in because there's no no growth. And that that would have burdened because then the only, the only other thing that the council can look at, a city can look at, is actually raising taxes. By doing this, it it begins to increase the property values of the whole city and correct and and do that to the individual, the council can see that we're revenue, generating more revenue and you could conceivably lower the tax rate. Because with a lower tax rate, you're still gonna receive the additional revenue. And then that way you offset whatever burden it might have been caused to the existing homeowner.
Thirty years now.
Not during that period of time as the growth continues.
Immediately, the city will immediately start benefiting from the new homes that would come in that otherwise wouldn't be built. So it's kind of like, you have all this vacant land that can't be built on. If we do nothing, we'll continue getting zero dollars, you're right, that's what we'll get. If we do something, we'll have the benefit of those homes and those new tax dollars coming into the city. You might say like, where did this come from? Well, I'll tell you where it it's come from. I I've been involved with the golf course for the last ten years. And I've seen some of the new plans to put in new new homes. And I just, it breaks my heart seeing these homes all packed on top of each other. It just didn't make sense to me. This isn't a way that we grow in a flourishing way. Everybody knows that. We all probably grew up in places where you had sidewalks, parks, you had nice amenities that you were able to use. So I investigated, how are other places doing this? How can there be a place like Mattiero, right down the street, that's putting in sidewalks, parks, lights? You know, what whatever they kind of decide is going to make it a flourishing place to live. And in the research, this is what came back. So, you know, we looked into it and visited on it for over six months and said, this is an opportunity that we have to try and take for the town of Laguna Vista. And it was born, quite frankly, out of my art because I wanted to see it happen in the right way. I want to live in a place that I'm proud of. And if we're gonna build homes, I don't want to pack homes on top of each other. I want to build a nice space where I can walk and I can see people be happy. So that's really where it came from. It's a win, win, win. It's a win for the city, it's a win for the residents, and it allows developer to finally build out some land that's been sitting vacant for thirty years. Mr. Sarki here is joining me as as the representative of Gallardville Homes. And for us, you know, it's been a real passion project and something we really believe in.
I'm allowed to talk, benefit of my opinions, can this be the one I speak at?
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you, everyone in attendance, everyone in attendance, for the passion with which you do your due diligence and responsibilities. Adam and I also serve for the Water District, we raised here from that meeting. Without getting down that rabbit hole, I want to speak to the third-party administration company that was sought out through legal counsel collaboration between legal counsel of the city and the legal counsel represents the developer in the private sector. This is a reputable company, I don't know if you want to speak to it. All they do is exclusively administrate TURS obligations all throughout the state and country. It'll be in their hands. It's not gonna be in the committee meetings' hands of regulating the reimbursement. The committee meeting is going to meet and and help assist governing this. But the execution of reimbursement goes to a third party that has no affiliation with Gallardville Homes, golf course, state of Laguna Vista, it's all they do for a living. You can look them up. I recommend looking them up, very reputable company, and this is what they do. Second bucket I'd like to kind of pour into. As Adam eloquently alluded to, the risk is on that of the developer. Developer is willing to invest millions of dollars to get the momentum started for such a project. The location, I think, may need to be spoke of. It's the southern portion of the of the of the golf course community. It's roughly, right now, it sits hundred and eighty-seven acres, but all these, what word do you use? Degregated or whatever? Give me a Notre Dame word. But all the lots that exist, there's a couple one five ten, there's one, I don't know, Howard one hundred that bucks up against our commercially zoned land that we own. It'll afford us the opportunity privately to go and pay for that land, to develop that land that's just set here for decades. You thought of the word yet?
It's dilapidated, dilapidated land.
Wow, yeah, thank you. And so anyway, there's roughly two hundred and thirty acres of developed land in the proposed area. Fifty of those acres will be essentially donated for city use. The walking trails he's referring to, the dog park he keeps talking about, the the six acre lake, the sidewalks too, fifty acres, over twenty percent of the land that the private sector is buying will be for the city to use. After these millions of dollars get spent, I think it's also important to note, like assessments have to happen. They happen this year to create baseline, and the next year it'll happen again. And the and the forecasting that we're we're, we are showing on our forecasting financials is that we want to be eligible for we being the private sector for the first reimbursement until Q one twenty twenty-seven. And that reimbursement is going to be peanuts compared to the money that's gonna be put into the community executing the plans that's before our committee today. So the reason the life of this is so long is because historically, it takes a long time for the private sector even to start to get money back. And it all starts with private sector putting a lot of money in. You know, I've I've been to several of these meetings. One of the most well-attended meeting was one where it was passionate about librarians position. I think that was over eleven thousand dollars. You know, as someone that's been trying to do a good job developing this area for eight years now, I look forward to the day where we don't have to have those kind of meetings anymore. And furthermore, our police department can have their own headquarters in building. And furthermore, our fire department can have something they're even more proud of than what they already have right now. And furthermore, we can have some medical, you know, we're looking for medical to come into the commercial sector. So there is a lot of opportunity here for everyone involved. And again, I'll just finish with, it's the private sector's risk. They've got to put all the money down and into it in hopes that there may be some reimbursement later. It's a revenue stream for the city. It's a possible reimbursement stream that we govern by a reputable third party for the private sector. So that's that's all I have to contribute, unless there's any direct questions.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven.
Second, I'd like, councilmember is Kernanda. Improve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven. To approve order number 2025-07.
Councilmember Howard. Councilmember Perez, yes. Councilmember Corningis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant? Yes. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
I accuse myself of following the necessary paperwork with the city secretary.
We appreciate it. Be happy to have more conversation about especially this hour if we could help give you any information that would make you feel more comfortable with it. Thanks again, you guys, for your time. Thanks, Seth.
Thanks, buddy.
Back up to the top. Item five, discussion about collection and selection of project architect for the expansion of the fire station funded by ARPA.
So representative of the council, before this side of this issue that last meeting, it was brought back and invited to give a more good opportunity to with the council as a tool to really be following this, you know, in a very detailed manner. When I read the recommendation, in which I still have that recommendation before you on each one of these items, but right now with this one, one of the things that you're talking to and consulting with the attorney is obviously the city has the ability to go ahead and develop a very strict procedure for selection, rating, et cetera. But it doesn't necessarily have to be done that way. Basically, the advice that the city manager can recommend to the council, give a recommendation as to who would be selected. And selection is not necessarily selecting that one, but a preference so that after a selection, you still have to negotiate an agreement with that firm. And if that agreement, if we cannot negotiate a mutually agreed agreement, then we go to the next one. So it's a process still. And I use, in the paperwork that I sent you for all four of them, I use the example of one of the projects that's ongoing where they went through a very extensive rating system, which ended up resulting in the opposite of what the system was supposed to do. So consequently, I really did not, I felt comfortable with the attorney's advice that I could recommend. Because if we go through that tedious process, it doesn't necessarily give you what you're looking for. Sometimes it includes the opposite way. But I got before you, obviously, it's a recommendation, they're listed according to preference. But if you have any questions on either one of those two firms, I would like to answer those questions.
What is the total solicited professional services? So what is the total solicited professional services? What is the amount that we will be paying these architects?
Again, like I said, we select based on the experience and support. And then we have to negotiate a contract, which will come back to this council. So at this point, we don't actually consider costs. This is an RFQ. This is kind of it, request the qualification. This is just a step. The next step is that we have to negotiate whoever you select in the order they selected. We negotiate with the top ones. And if we can agree, we move forward with that one, and then we go to the next one.
Talking about these two, right?
Yeah, right now. Which is K architect and always spend the science. And this is them according to my recommendation for the council to consider.
So maybe one little history. Mr. Noel is right here, who's K plus, our architect, who you all know. He's lived down the street and all, y'all know that. And then Gomez, he was the one who did all the architecture, worked for the park 15 years ago. They both done work in our town, you know, just both are great companies.
What is the amount of money left for the fire station? Where's the allotment of money?
That's about the one of the ARPA funds.
I believe it's 197, 197,000.
I think it's the proposed expansion of the fire station, that amount will cover, it should cover. Including the people, whoever the architect is.
And we've already committed those dollar amounts for the ARPA funds and there's no going back. Those dates are over.
The rules of ARPA is that all the money has been committed by December 2024, which has passed, and this community met that requirement, it was committed. And now the money has to be spent by the end of 2026. Then we still have some time, but the sooner we get started, the better. I might add that I think that by creating and creating that additional two or three stalls, it would give the community an opportunity to consider having an ambulance on site. Of course, that would have to be negotiated with those residents that we pay them on a contract basis to provide that service from those residents. Because we don't have a place to go. But we negotiate an agreement when we have the stalls. Then we can negotiate an agreement where they would have an ambulance on site and actually manned by them. It will cost a city, but then we will be providing a very needed service. Instead of waiting for them to come from those residents, they would be right here.
Everybody out there doesn't know what ARPA was, that was COVID money. So it's, we're still spending COVID money. So this is all grant money.
So the project that you have, or the vision that you have for the improvement, do you have already submitted, Doc?
Basically, the drawing I've made for Mr. Trevino, we've looked at it, we've agreed that it kind of maximizes the amount of funds we have for potential growth for the city.
Okay, and then what is the percent that is going to be allotted for the architect?
I do not know that.
That has to be negotiated, like I said, we want to negotiate a.
Please, after this.
We cannot negotiate the fee at this point.
So you're going to hire somebody, but what if they say, no, it's not?
We're not hiring.
I mean, not hired, but if we were selecting.
We're going to say we can go in and negotiate. That's all we're saying, yeah. Obviously, one of the procedures which would be basically to approve the recommendation or unless you want to flip them, because there are only two. Basically, the two of them, it's just in that order so that we negotiate first with the first one. And if it doesn't work out, then we would go to the second.
Now, why not just do both, if that's the case?
Yeah, well, you choose some in that priority, in this case. If you want to go with my recommendation, it would be that person first that we negotiated, where we go to the second.
Could I ask, I don't know, maybe I can't ask, what caused you to choose one or the other? If we're going to negotiate, is there a reason, something that caused you to choose one or the other?
Well, at this point, you'll basically have to select one. And the top one, which it could be, you either take my recommendation or you basically, you could say our top one is going to be the other one than this.
So for an example, in the past, we have been in situations like this or presented with some statistical data like its financials. This is what they're going to charge, blah, blah, blah. So then we go based on that because then more money is spent on the project. Because then what happens with the Gomez project over here with the police department? You know, we got a drawing for 35K. So in the past, before Mr. Trevino, that is what they used to give us to so we can make a financial judgment or a choice. An educated decision. Right, based on that number. And that's all, that's all.
That number would be where you would approve the contract, that needs to be negotiated.
Okay, based off of receiving both. Oh, based on receiving both. I'll make a motion to approve the city manager to negotiate with both of the architect firms and submit his findings to the council. I'll second.
For Howard, second by councilman Hernandez to direct the city manager to negotiate with both K plus architect and Gomez Mendez signs for the fire station project funded by ARPA.
Councilmember Howard? Yes. Councilmember Perez? Yes. Councilmember Corningis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant? Yes. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
I'm six, discussion about selection and selection consultant to prepare EPA grant application.
Yes, and that one, that's the one that we only have one proposal. They're the ones that actually was right, the grant application. We really don't have any choice left, we wanted to go out and re-solicit. My recommendation is that we go ahead and negotiate that that person, that proposal be selected to be negotiated, that's my suggestion.
Most are not going currently, so we're not going with that.
No, no. Remember, this is that big grant that the guy is trying to get, you know? That's like 30 million dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve city manager to negotiate with the RENA network for the preparation of EPA grant application. I'll second.
You'll see what Howard's thinking of, like, that is to approve RENA network to prepare the EPA grant application.
Councilmember Howard? Yes. Councilmember Perez? Yes. Councilmember Corningis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant? Yes. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item seven, discussion possible action on selection of project engineer for the EPA grant project. Same recommendation. Discussion.
I'd like to make a recommendation, I know when we do these approvals, either it's negotiation or we are approving them for the project. The council, I feel like it's best practice that we are given, like the information prior to the meeting, like email or the recommendations are here, but we don't have references because in most cases you call, like I've called references before for different engineering services, stuff like that. I had to reach out to one of them to see what their projects have been, what the current project is that is in reference to drainage. And I know another council member reached out as well for information that wasn't given to them. So we really can't make informed decisions without that information. So just in the future, if we could have that. Maybe it's, Lydia and Tom will pick that up. Yes. I will make a, I will move to approve full comp consulting services as a selection of the project engineer for the proposed EPA project. I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Howard, second by Councilwoman Bryant, who will consult consulting services for the EPA grant project.
Councilmember Howard? Yes. Councilmember Perez? Yes. Councilmember Corningis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant? Yes. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
At eight, discussion possible action on selection of project engineer for the drainage improvement, GLO project 24-067-005-E192.
Again, recommendation from city manager to say.
You'll have experience with two of these guys. You'll have experience with the project. We've actually done work with it in the past too. Years and years ago, when we tried to do curb and gutter and street improvements.
The project that they gave us was unattainable, we all kind of knew it, but we kind of wanted to know how much we had to charge. Yeah. I'm pretty sure it was about 20, they were just spending another. I think now it's probably like 16 million.
Any questions, Seth?
I want to make a motion to choose for consulting or
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hernandez, second by Councilmember Howard to approve full from consulting services.
Councilmember Howard? Yes. Councilmember Perez? Yes. Councilmember Corningis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant? Yes. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item nine, discussion possible action on approval or by board membership application. I have a report about the byboard.
We, we, we don't show as official member, so this is really a routine matter anymore. Yeah, because we used to be part of the byboard for years now. But just to make sure, especially with the parks project, it would be fine. So we recommend that you have to submit the application.
Does everybody know what the byboard is?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I have a question that we submit the by-board membership application for the town.
I'm going to grant, second by Councilmember, coordination to approve the by-board membership application. And just for everybody in the, in the audience, just so you know what the by-board is. It's instead of having to go out for, for bids, which is time consuming and cost, and very costly. The government has a, the state of Texas has a group of vendors that are, that are in the by-board, that you don't have to go out for bid. And they have, they usually if, not always have lower costs than if you go out for bid, at the end of the day. And it takes a lot of time and effort away from city management, they have to do that kind of stuff, so. And all, I mean, schools, the, the school, the schools do it, cities do it, counties do it, state does it, so.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennies?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hennig?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
I intend discussion of possible action on approval of contract with Just Foya.
So I'm actually gonna ask our city secretary, she can quickly explain what this is and why we need it.
Members of the council, this is a proposal from Just Foya. Just Foya is a, an entity that helps most municipalities streamline the public information request process to ensure that they're getting completed and on a timely basis. So it allows for citizens or anyone to be able to submit a public information request online. And from there, the person who is in charge of receiving those requests, which in this case would be myself, would be able to forward it to the appropriate parties, whether it be police department, city administration, permit, whichever department it belongs to, and be able to send them notifications as to when it's due. And that way, there's no lost information, no, it, it gives them the, the, the notifications to make sure that they are submitting on time. It also helps to redact a lot of information. Right now, we're having to manually do that. And with the police department, there are a lot of information that should be redacted, and that helps streamline that process, so it's not taking more time.
Or some recommendation that we would be able to purchase your software.
My, my question is, is this in the budget anywhere?
For the traction, traction services.
So we have enough money in the budget for next year?
And we would actually go right into the different departments.
Is this, um, what cities use this?
Locally, I can tell you that most persons use it. It, it really does streamline the process, that there's no room for mistakes. So that way, we're not, we're not disclosing any information that we shouldn't. And of course, it also gives them a notification, let's say, if, for say, our police department, if we're not able to disclose that information just yet, because maybe there's an investigation, it allows us to use a template to send to the, the asking party, just that information. And we can always follow up from there.
So you're familiar with this? I'd like to approve the, uh, the approval of the contract with Just Foya.
Councilwoman Howard, second by Councilwoman Pettis to approve contract with Just Foya.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennies?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hennig?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Discussion possible action, contract proposal and associate for annual audit on October one, twenty twenty-four, September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
So council, we're at that point, we're, we're about to complete our fiscal year. And with that comes the audit for the proceeding here. And with that here, and we recommend that the councils and associates be selected as the auditor.
I'd like a motion to approve the contract with Caskos and Associates for annual audit on October one, twenty-four to September thirty, twenty-five.
Second. I'd like Councilmember Howard, second by Mayor Carter to approve Caskos and Associates for the annual audit.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennies?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hennig?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item twelve, discussion of possible action to approve MIP training proposal.
Uh, members of the council, sometime back, you authorized me to start placing out, actually, this software company because of the issues. And we started working with Inco, the other one, but we ready to two big obstacles. The way we need to change gears, one, it would cost fifty-two thousand dollars for the new company to, to take us in. And then it would still take about a year for them to do the transition. Which means that we still would be with the problem for a whole year, and we still have to pay fifty-two thousand dollars. And so, well, we went back to the, the other company, and we got several questions answered. That it was, it was good, that we can, we can work with them. And of course, they can provide trading, which is critical, but wasn't provided in the past. But it'll cost, and so we're recommending that instead of changing companies, that we stay with this one, but get the appropriate training. And that's a proposal, and recommend that, that you all, that you approve this, so that we can continue to improve our financial management system with the same company.
I'd like a motion to approve that, right, please.
Is it the same? The same person that got the training the last time? Or it was, it was two different people? What's the last name? Where's the training?
Two different.
Where's the training at?
This is remote, probably doing it all online. So I, I have, I do have a question. It says a quantity of thirty, is that like here each employee, or that's thirty times, or that's thirty modules?
Uh, no, the, well, the, the training would be for all the staff, for all the months.
All thirty for all?
Yeah.
So there's thirty modules?
Yeah.
Since the order form, thirty, I'm sorry.
Up to thirty, but, yeah, because you're like, there's several modules within each, each, each group. Just on the financial, there's several of those, payroll, et cetera, and so forth.
So it's not the number of people?
No.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'll second.
I made a motion, I'm sorry.
I can.
That was made by, yeah, Councilman Pettis, second by Councilman Bryant, to approve the MIP training proposal.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennies?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hennig?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item fourteen, executive session, I'm going to feel the need to go to executive session. You have a couple of items, okay, item fourteen, executive session, to take the closed session in accordance with the open meetings act, as authorized by technical government code regarding any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, constation county attorney, five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real properties, five five one point zero seven four, deliberation regarding personnel matters, five five one point zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We're talking about deliberation regarding town, department, head duties, and organizational structure. Make a motion. I'll second, motion by Councilman Bryant, second by Mayor Carter to go to executive session.
Howard.
Howard, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennies?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Yes. We're ready to make a session at. Back from executive session at seven twenty. Consideration possible action as we set of executive session deliberation.
Make a motion that the city manager proceeds as discussed in executive session.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Bryant, second by Councilmember Pettis to, and city manager, proceed as discussed in executive session.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennies?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hennig?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
And sixteen, adjournment.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Bryant, second by Councilmember Pettis to adjourn, all in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye. Trying to do that new version of be a little faster.